All right. Good afternoon, everybody. To council and all of our viewers and staff, welcome to our May 24th, 2021 Des Moines City Council meeting. Let's call this meeting to order, and I will ask the clerk to please take roll.
County?
Here.
Boson?
Here.
Boss?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
Your Honor, that's a quorum.
All right. Item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
I'll move.
It's been moved. And I don't think we have any corrections on this one. So all in favor, say aye.
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 The opposition. Item passes. Item three is this evening approving the consent agenda. These are items three through forty-one. Generally, these are routine items and are enacted by one roll call vote without separate discussion unless someone, council, or public requests an item to be removed or makes a statement about it to sometimes be considered separately. This evening, on the consent items, three through forty-one, county votes no on five. Item thirty-two, council member Boson wishes to speak. Item thirty-three, council member Boson wishes to speak. Item thirty-nine, council member Boson wishes to speak. And item forty, council member Mandelbaum is going to abstain. Are there any others?
I hear none, Your Honor. I'll move the item number three.
All right. Item three has been moved. Would you poll the council, please, Madam Clerk?
County?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
Let's quickly ask if there's anyone from the public who would like to make comment on any of the other items or would like to suggest any to be polled. All right. Good afternoon, everybody. To council and all of our viewers and staff, welcome to our May twenty-fourth, 2021 Des Moines City Council meeting. Let's call this meeting to order, and I will ask the clerk to please take roll.
County?
Here.
Boson?
Here.
Boss?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
Your Honor, that's a quorum.
All right. Item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
I'll move.
It's been moved. And I don't think we have any corrections on this one. So all in favor, say aye.
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 The opposition. Item passes. Item three is this evening approving the consent agenda. These are items three through forty-one. Generally, these are routine items and are enacted by one roll call vote without separate discussion unless someone, council, or public requests an item to be removed or makes a statement about it to sometimes be considered separately. This evening, on the consent items, three through forty-one, county votes no on five. Item thirty-two, council member Boson wishes to speak. Item thirty-three, council member Boson wishes to speak. Item thirty-nine, council member Boson wishes to speak. And item forty, council member Mandelbaum is going to abstain. Are there any others?
I hear none, Your Honor. I'll move the item number three.
All right. Item three has been moved. Would you poll the council, please, Madam Clerk?
County?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
Let's quickly ask if there's anyone from the public who would like to make comment on any of the other items or would like to suggest any to be polled. I can't see anything.
This is Reverend-
Emily. Emily Ewing.
Yep. This is Pastor Emily Ewing. They them pronouns. I would like to pull item number forty from the consent agenda. I think adding, it's about adding security to the Court Avenue Party District. But I think that there's a lot of problems when we're increasing funding for that and increasing police presence in those places as well as just kind of, in general, that area just looks pretty terrible and kind of like somebody's trying to corral in animals, which is probably not the image that we want to portray as Des Moines. And so I think having a larger conversation about why this is happening in this particular way would be helpful and why we need more security, which I'm assuming is police presence there.
There any others?
Adam Callanan.
Adam?
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I would like to see number thirty-three polled. It's an issue that a lot of us have been passionate about. Looks like we're actually coming with some solutions for the homelessness problem in the city, and it'd be great if the public had a chance to hear about those and talk about this.
Yep, that item is already pulled to speak.
Jason Farley.
Jason?
Number forty as well for me, please.
That appears to be all, Your Honor.
All right. Item forty and item thirty-three. Item thirty-three has already been polled by council member Boson. And would we like to consider a vote to further poll item forty for additional discussion? All right. Hearing none. The consent agenda has been passed, and we will now go to the items. Item thirty-two is our first item. Council member Boson. This is approving a memorandum of understanding within Invest DSM for the administration of the city's Neighborhood Matching Grant Fund Program. There was a council communication number twenty-one dash two twenty-five. Council member Boson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to highlight Carl Boss and I sit on the board of the Invest DSM that was created to help make improvements in the neighborhoods. And there's four piloted neighborhoods, but this is open to all neighborhoods except those four. So I think it's important. It's limited dollars, but it's what we've learned that has been very successful with Invest DSM. It's a block challenge grant where people can get with their neighbors and get together and get a matching grant. I know there's going to be a lot more publicity, but I just wanted to bring out and highlight that it's what we've learned. And it's kind of what Invest DSM was all about, to take best practices and move it. So with that, if there's no other comments, I'd like, I'll move item thirty-two.
All right.
Well.
Council member Gatto?
Mayor, thank you, and thank you to yourself and council member Voss and Boson for serving on this committee. This is a great thing that we partnered with the county to do, and, you know, we appreciate that. Just wondering how we're going to get the word out to the neighborhoods and to particular property owners of how we're going to do that. Would that be part of maybe the county would put that in, maybe the water bills to everyone? I don't know if you guys have discussed that, but I think that goes to every property. So possibly, if we can partner with them and then our city source letter that goes out, I'd like to see that in there also. But I think this is a great idea. I know it's worked well in some of the areas, and I appreciate you guys serving so diligently over the past few years with this, the three of you. So thank you.
And I think pushing it out to the neighborhood organizations-
Yep, absolutely.
Yep. Council member Mandelbaum.
Yeah, I was, I was just gonna say that it's great that we're expanding and taking the lessons learned from this and applying it to other neighborhoods. I was actually at a tree planting on Forty Second Street this weekend, and that, that's one of the areas that has used the block grant challenge this past year. And when you talk with the neighbors there, they, they've seen an immediate impact, and it's, it's gotten more folks engaged from a neighborhood perspective and more folks investing and taking steps to improve, improve their properties and doing so collectively. So I think it's, I think it's great that we are expanding that and taking this lesson learned and appreciate council member Boson's leadership on this as well as council member Voss and the mayor who are serving on this. So glad to see this happening.
All right. Council member Voss.
Oh, yeah. I just wanted to note that the mayor is part of this also, so.
I just-
All right.
Thank your mayor, County, for your service on this. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, it actually is the coach, so.
Council member Boson moved item thirty-two. Would you poll the council, please? Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right. Item thirty-three, council member Boson also asked for this one to be polled preliminary commitment with home funds to Anawim for rehabilitation of forty-eight, forty-five Merle Hay Road. Council communication number twenty-one dash two-three-four. Council member Boson.
Thank you, Mayor. I think, again, we've had a lot of conversation on how can we help the houseless population, and I think this looks like it could be a very strong project, and I want to thank Anawim for coming forward. I know we don't know what the amount is yet, but I think it has a lot of components that many of us would be very supportive of, and I look forward to the final project, and hopefully they can get everything worked out because it's something that's very necessary, and hopefully we can find other locations and replicate this if we need to. So again, with that, I'll just move item thirty-three. I just wanted to highlight that I think it's a great project and look forward to the final details.
Yeah, that's, you know, that old Days Inn motel up there, and I think repurposing of it provides a great opportunity to, to help those that are less fortunate. I see that council member Gray has his hand up. Bill?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I had coffee with Russ Fraser of Anawim on Friday, and he gave me quite a few of the details. It looks like a very exciting project. It's, if they can do it. Now, we're in the early stages right now. They still haven't purchased the property, but according to Russ, there is a good chance that the owner has pretty much extinguished his working career there and wants to return back to England. So it's a pretty good chance that they're going to be able to buy it. About the only two things that they have to do is a sprinkler system and they're gonna do some work in the restroom. So it's pretty exciting to hear. They're going to, it's gonna be, they hope to have it to be a one-stop shop, and hopefully get people, the homeless people that are out there. It's on a bus route, so there's a positive there. They can get them trained, get them their skills back up, provide any needed treatment that has to go on. Yeah, it is almost like a one-stop shop. So I agree with Connie. I think this is a great opportunity here, and it's not too far from the place that they originally wanted to do over there on the corner of the Merle Hay and the entrance pass. I'm gonna support that as well, Connie. Thank you.
All right. And also, we have not voted yet, but there was, one of our members of the public asked to have this polled, so I'll ask if he's still on. Adam, did you want to make a comment on this one? Evan, Adam Callanan. Is Adam-
I mean, yeah, I mean, I just wanted people to be able to have speaking time on this. I can give a comment that it looks good, and we're excited to see that this is happening. It's, you know, we just need to see more stuff like this happening in the city. I'm glad to see that it's, it's starting somewhere. This is a good starting point.
All right. All right. Adam had asked to have that pulled, so thank you, Adam, for your comment. Let's go ahead and poll the council.
County?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right. Next one is item thirty-nine. This is a implementation of a city employee residency incentive program. Again, council member Boson.
Again, I just wanted to highlight this. This is something that I worked on when I was on school board for implementing something for the school district, and I know we've had a lot of discussion with this in the city. I, I don't know if all the details have been finalized a hundred percent, but I know that conversation has come up with CCI and the racial justice team about getting more employees living in the city. So I think this is another great addition. I would just, would like the manager to share this with the school district, so it might be something that they could replicate too with its kind of same details. And with that, I'll move item thirty-nine.
Scott, why don't you make a quick comment on that?
Yeah, absolutely. Council member Boson, we can, I can share that with, with the school district. As you mentioned, this is, this has been in the works for about two years, and early on, we had repeat conversations with the school district and how we might design it. So they were where the front end of those conversations, and we'll get back with them with where we're at today.
Thank you.
All right. Let's poll the council, please, on item thirty-nine.
County?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right. Before we move into the, we just completed the consent agenda, I will say that we have amended our procedural rules of our council meetings, starting with our June meeting, and we're, some were concerned about the, the times and, and the possibility of space between certain parts and, and taking a break. So we are going to move the whole thing and then plus the time of day to start. So we're going to move the, the agenda to five o'clock and, and we'll proceed much as we are this evening, but rather than starting at the four-thirty timeframe, we will move the whole meeting to, to begin at five, and hopefully that'll meet the schedule of our general public who would like to attend and, and when they have an opportunity, make a comment to the city council. And so that's why we made the changes at the request of our, of our citizenry. So any rate, let us move on. The council consent agenda has been completed, and it is four fifty-two. Let's move on to approving. Item forty-two is items related to the Central Iowa Water Trails Phase One Dam Mitigation and User Access Project. A is granting a variance of Flood Plane Development Code, Section Fifty dash thirty-four, Prens fourteen, for the development in a floodway that results in an increase in base flood elevation to the Des Moines Area Metropolitan Planning Organization on behalf of the Central Iowa Water Trails LLC for the Central Iowa Water Trails Scott Avenue Project. That is council communication number twenty-one dash two twenty-eight. B is approving a letter of no objection regarding the proposed Central Iowa Water Trails Phase One Dam Mitigation and User Access Project, council communication number twenty-one dash two twenty-four. And C is authorizing a notification regarding city participation in the Central Iowa Water Trails System, subject to the agreement terms being finalized, and that's still in process, council communication number twenty-one dash two thirty-five. Scott, do you want to make a couple of quick comments on all the work that our staff and the whole region that has come together on this to work on this Central Iowa Water Trails project?
Yes, Mayor, I can do that. Scott Sanders, city manager. So I can give a little more detail, and we've got Pam Cooksey that we can also rely on for additional answers, any questions. So it's a three-part approval that's in front of you. The first two parts really go together, and that is, at the highest level, that there is an impact to having the water trails, but it is to a minor degree such that we do not object, and the improvements that we have designed for the levee can accommodate that impact of the water trails without additional changes necessary. So that covers the first two together. And then the third item is authorizing a notification that, that the city does want to participate in the Central Iowa Water Trails System, i.e., this is a support comment from council that the council agrees that we will work towards the finalizing of the twenty-eight E agreement between the city and the, and the other cities involved and participants and the nonprofit. That's a few weeks away from being completed. And then there is an obligation to pay our percentage of, of the annual cost of that new organization, Central Iowa Water Trails, and that cost is roughly a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. And the future year cost will be determined by the board as it gets established here in, in the summer. This is a commitment that the nonprofit has asked us to make, and we will bring back the twenty-eight E agreement when it is completed, anticipated to be in August council meeting, because we can then bring forward also any agreements that we will have with the first four sites that are being improved in Des Moines for the water trails, so that hopefully we can get as many of those approvals on the, on the same agenda for the same topic. Again, other staff are available for questions, Mayor or council.
I know that Pam has really worked hard on this because there's a lot of engineering questions that had to be answered, and of course, we're constantly working with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers in, in regard to our levee system, which surrounds both of our rivers here. And I think that we may ask Pam to make a couple of quick comments, but I want to say that, given the reception that Des Moines got, and not only locally but nationally, given the, the Olympic trials of our, the, the duh contest of skateboarding, it really was interesting and looked at, at a future. And I think that is, we, that event took place along the river, and the amenities, the river and the Des Moines River and the, the raccoon, for so many years and decades, the city turned their back on the river. And I think that we now look at it as such an amenity and an opportunity to, for people to not only boat on it, but paddle on it and really have a great experience. So working with every, so many of our partners in the region, I think is a very positive step. Pam, did you want to make a, a quick comment about where, where we are in this process and any concerns that, that we might have as we work together with everybody to bring it to completion? And Josh?
Thank you, Mayor.
Do you, Pam, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, we've been working, significant amounts of city staff as well as the consultants working for the Central Iowa Water Trails Group have been working together for about the last year, year and a half on getting this put together. The design has been modeled and found to fit within our levee design. We weren't, we weren't required to redesign our levee, so that was good news on our side. They worked very hard to minimize that impact to fit within whatever area that we could allow within our levee design. So we are prepared to recommend going forward with this portion. It's time to submit to the Corps of Engineers for final approval. As the design progresses, Scott mentioned that we will be bringing items back to council, including the agreements as well as the final plans. The, the project is planned to be bid by the city council, or by the DOT in December of this year. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
All right. Pam, thank you so much. Josh, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, well, I, I'd be happy to, to move items forty-two, A, B, and C. You know, Mayor, as you said, I think this project has tremendous possibility for, for our community, and we want to continue to be engaged with our partners and to work through the details to, to bring this to reality in the most successful way we can. So I'm glad to, to see that we're continuing to make progress. I do want to, to highlight a couple of things because I, I know, you know, Part C is subject to bringing back the twenty-eight E, and, and I know there are details and important details to work out on the twenty-eight E. Particularly, I, I know our staff has been working to address the cost cap issue, and I think that's a particularly important piece to, to address our exposure, potential exposure in the, in the twenty-eight E and to give us some certainty about what that is. So I would very much like to see a cost cap in anything that comes back to us. The other piece that- The other piece that, that I'd like to talk about, and don't need to talk about here, but I'd like to dig into details between now and when this comes back to us, is just understanding, you know, our, our blue letter talked about the operational revenue funding ongoing costs and referenced the, the pro forma that the water trails has. And I'd like to understand that piece of this a little bit better, understand the assumptions, the number of days in the water, how variables like weather and flooding and drought and water quality all play into that. I, I know we've seen, for example, you know, at Graves Lake, in a year where we experienced flooding, the rentals at Graves Lake are, are way down from that and just how those assumptions could potentially impact this, this project and want to make sure that we understand that when this comes back. But appreciate all the work that Pam and the rest of our staff are putting into this project and that our partners in the region are. We're, we're getting to the point where we just have to work out details and make sure that, that we get those pieces right. So glad to see this step forward.
Joe, I see your hand up.
Yep. Thanks, Mayor. And just a, a thank you to our staff. Pam did a fantastic job. I've, I've served for a number of months on the Executive Committee of the Water Trails, and those are great points, Josh. I, I would agree with you about the cap. I've, I've, I pushed that and, and I will continue to, to work diligently on trying to, to get that cap in there because I think it's very important. As far as the pro forma goes, that is going to be a difficult one and, and a good thing that there is going to be an endowment portion of it in there that we'll have to look at some of the things that you focused on. And I know that we can't put that on the taxpayers of the city of Des Moines. We've, we've did a large contribution ourself to make this happen. It is, it is a, it is a, a great amenity. And not to mention, it's going to help get folks into the water so we can solve the water quality issue that I believe that we all have, that we see each and every day, that I know that, that, that it's very important to you as a council member and as a resident of the city of Des Moines, Councilman Mandelbaum, that, that you want to see solved as well as the rest of us. So we will, we will work and I will continue to be an advocate for, for all of those things as I serve on that committee.
All right. And I believe the, the item has been moved. Councilmember Mandelbaum for forty-two, A, B, and C. Would you pull the council, please?
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Are we voting on the forty-two?
Forty-two, A, B, and C.
Thank you, yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
All right. We are now going to move to our hearing items. And for the hearing items this evening, we have one zoning item only this evening. We also have three vacation hearings and one lease hearing. As a reminder, for the zoning item only, which is item forty-six, that one was continued from our last meeting, and we will hear from the parties in interest first and then the general public. The parties in interest again are only those, the applicant for the rezoning and those persons living within two hundred and fifty feet of the property to be rezoned to whom the city sent a, a notice. After all the parties in interest have been, have commented, we will open it up to any member of the public for germane comments to add to the, to aid the city clerk in calling on the parties in interest. I'll ask that everyone else not raise their hand on the Zoom unless they are the zoning applicant or they live with the, in that two hundred and fifty feet and receive that mailed notice. Anyone who raises their hand before that and will be compared to that mailing list, and if you're not on the list, you're going to be considered disruptive and will not be recognized for the remainder of the meeting. So please, I ask, wait until I call on the general public for the zoning items and, or you won't be called on if, if you get out of line and, and are disruptive. After all the parties in interest have been called upon, then we're going to open it up for general comment. At not to exceed one minute per person for a maximum of seven minutes. And we'll be called on for germane comments because this is a continued hearing. We are asking for only those who haven't spoken on this matter and only for new information that hasn't been presented to the council during that previous hearing. The remainder of those hearings this evening, any interested person may make germane comments at not to exceed one minute per person to a maximum of five minutes. So let's go ahead and get started. And our first item is item forty-three. This item is on correcting the vacation of a portion of Ashworth Park located north of and adjoining five fourteen Foster Drive. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. We'll open the hearing and ask council any comments on this item.
I don't have any comments, Mr. Mayor, but I will happily move item forty-three, forty-three A. And I'm happy to also, based on council rules, move to waive the second and third, assuming that we don't hear of any issues from the public.
Okay. Let's ask the, the general public, is there anyone who would like to make a comment on this vacation of a portion of Ashworth Park, which is located north of and adjoining this five fourteen Foster Drive? Seeing none, would you pull the council, please?
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Item forty-four is on the conveyance of a vacated street right of way located south of and adjoining fourteen oh three Dean Avenue to Sabrina Greenwich and Lucas Greenwich for fifty dollars. Anyone, council, again, fourteen oh three Dean.
Mr. Mayor, I hear none. I'll move forty-four.
All right. Forty-four has been moved. We'll ask the general public if they have any comment again on that vacation right of way located at, at and adjoining fourteen oh three Dean. Seeing none, would you pull the council, please?
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Hearing number forty-five is on the conveyance of a vacated alley right of way adjoining four thirteen Euclid Avenue to Euclid Foresight LLC for five thousand and eighty dollars. Council, any comments on this one?
I have, I have no comments. If there are no other comments, I would move to adopt item forty-five.
All right. We'll ask if there's anyone for the general public who would like to make comment on this conveyance of this vacated alley right of way. Seeing none, would you pull the council, please?
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
All right. Our next item is forty-six. This is our hearing item, and it's on a request from Fairway Stores, Inc. Matt Heath is the officer for property at twenty-seven twenty-three Forty First Place to amend Plan DSM creating our tomorrow future land use classification from low-density residential within neighborhood node to a community mixed use within a neighborhood node and to rezone from N four neighborhood district to a limited MX three mixed-use district to allow off-site parking and access to be developed in conjunction with a limited retail sales use redevelopment of the property at twenty-seven sixteen Beaver Avenue. This item was continued from May tenth of twenty-twenty-one. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and B is a final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by Garrett S. Picklap, EPA Secretary and General Counsel for Fairway Stores, Inc., and requires six votes. Again, this is a zoning item, and we're going to first ask for the parties in interest. That would be the applicant and those persons living within that two hundred and fifty feet. We'll see if the, is there someone representing the applicant on this evening?
Your Honor, we have Kobe Pritchard, and he wants to share his screen.
Okay.
Hi there, Kobe Pritchard. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'm going to attempt to share my screen here. Give me one sec. All right, is everybody seeing a site plan?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Like I said, Kobe Pritchard, Fairway Stores, seven one five eighth Street, Boone, Iowa. I think on the call also I have Tim West, who, who was with us on the meeting on the tenth with Snyder Associates, who is our architect. And first off, just a quick thank you for your support and consideration following the last council meeting. I'm going to keep this fairly brief. I think everyone fully kind of understands the project at this, at this point, and I thought kind of the best way to move forward is talk about what's happened since the last meeting. And that's the reason why I'm pulling this up today. So what you're looking at is kind of an updated exhibit site plan, which is going to show a few changes, and I just thought it'd be most beneficial to just show what's changed since the continuation. So over the last two weeks, we've worked hard with staff to put forth a number of conditions. And the intent here is just to work with staff and figure out ways that we can improve both the site plan and just look closer at the concerns that we heard at the last meeting. So the first condition that was talked about and what we brought forward in, in a rezoning ordinance is the commercial truck traffic. So as you're looking here, we have added two signage points, both into the property to be rezoned and also at the E dress to show no commercial traffic and prohibiting that from entering or exiting this portion of the property. And the intent there is just to obviously keep that traffic off the forty-first priest, forty-first place access point. Secondly, was the setback requirement that got brought forward. And the difference that you see here, it's kind of hard to tell, but the condition read parking should not extend further west than the west facade of the house of the adjoining lot to the south. So this property down here. And what we did here was comply with that condition and remove three stalls, one, two, and then three. And what that does is just also adds some sort of insulation to this forty-first street place access point, giving some more room separate from this residential road. And lastly, also concentrating on this access point, we've added paving to help influence the traffic that enters and exits this, this piece of the property, where we're also going to be adding two pieces of signage here and here, and also the paving here to allow no left-hand turns, obviously discouraging anyone from driving down the road this way. And also what you look and also not added into the conditions was a couple of things that we felt were important. And the two additions, after meeting with the adjacent property owners both across the street and then directly adjacent to the south, we increased the height of the fencing that's going to surround this property to eight feet. And then we've also added some additional landscaping and shrubs to just add also, again, more insulation for the properties directly adjacent to this rezoned piece. So once we got this exhibit, we brought this to this property owner and this property owner, and we walked, walked through these conditions and additions to the site plan. And after we did that, I feel that city staff, fairway, and also those most affected feel more comfortable with, with the direction we're going. I hope we, we see their, their support tonight. And that's kind of what we've been working on to get everybody at a better comfort level to, to move this forward. So we've accepted all these conditions in full, have signed the acceptance of the rezoning ordinance, and Tim and I are here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Council, any questions?
None yet, Mayor.
All right. Carl, I see your hand up.
Oh, thank you, Mayor County. I can't quite tell from this drawing where, what, if there's a bike lane that, that still parallels eastbound on Urbandale Avenue. It looks like it drops off before it gets to the, gets to the intersection, but I can't, well, I guess the drawings are not up on our screen anymore. But can, can someone from, can someone from engineering respond to that question? I don't know if Steve Neighbors is in on the call tonight or one of the staff? Or perhaps a fairway representatives? No. Thank you.
Yeah, and then Kobe Pritchard.
Yeah, sorry about that. It looks like I lost my share screen, but I think it should be back on. I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. Tim, if you're on, he'd be, he'd, he'd know offhand. It's kind of hard to tell, like you said.
Yes, Kobe, can you hear me?
Yeah, Tim, we got you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. My name is Tim West with Snyder and Associates. We're the civil engineer and landscape architect for the project. We are not making any changes to the bike lane. You can see it slightly dashed in there. If you were to zoom in along that curb line that we're improving, currently there's an existing turn lane that exists between the sidewalk and is part of Urbandale Avenue. We're closing that based on the city's request to incorporate more green space in there and build a new curb. And that dashed line that's just above there that says concrete, kind of above it, that is the pavement marking for the, the existing bike lane, which is going to be unaffected. It'll be in the same spot as it is today.
All right. What I don't see, it dashing all the way to the, all the way to the intersection. So it, it gets almost to the alley, and then is that a continuation to the, to the east after the exit onto Urbandale Avenue? It's not dashed. It looks like it could be.
Yes, that's part of the, there would be additional markings that go all the way to the intersection. I think it's probably just the way the PDF cut that in there, but it's intended to remain existing and be marked as per city of Des Moines standards for the on-street bike lane.
All right, thank you.
All right. Any other interested parties?
Teresa Harold.
All right, Teresa? Can she unmute herself?
She should be able to. I don't know why she's having difficulty.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, Teresa.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Um, I've learned a new word in this process, NIMBY, and I'm sure there are people that are using that term to describe me, and I'm okay with that. What I'm not okay is that my neighbors and I have been left out a majority of conversations. What I'm not okay is that my neighbors and I have been left out a majority of conversations throughout this process. Those of us most affected by this decision and those of us who know this portion of the neighborhood best have often been dismissed. To date, there are two entities who have not dismissed us. The first was the Planning and Zoning Commission and most recently was Fairway. PNC, I think, made a good call in their decision. They were, they are the appointed experts and their vote was made in concern for the people of Beverdale. I am very grateful for their insight and expertise. Even one of the commissioners in support of the rezon added the additions of the front yard setback and the restrictions of commercial traffic on forty first place. These are imperative to make this situation work. After the last council meeting, I took a step back and I thought about what is needed in this process. I heard several members of Fairway's team say they wanted to be good neighbors. So I reached out to start that conversation. In the past two weeks, I've had the opportunity to speak with Kobe, Fairway's representative, several times. He met with us and we were able to discuss our concerns, give input into possible changes. And Kobe took those changes back to his team to see if they were feasible at this stage in the process. That really meant a lot. While I wish we'd been part of the conversation from the inception, I believe Fairway was under the impression that our input was being sought by the Neighborhood Association. It was not. After seeing the changes Fairway has made to the site plan based on the suggestions of the PNC commissioners and in consideration of the neighbors bordering the parking lot, I do definitely feel more comfortable. We will try to mitigate the impact on our street as much as they can. My issue has always been the safety of the walkers and bike riders who use Urbandale Avenue. I've heard several times from people involved in the process that there's an expectation that neighbors will walk and bike to the store as well as drive there. And this is a good thing, which is why we also need to ensure the pathways to walk and ride continue to be as safe as we can make them. To do this, I have asked, should this measure pass, Fairway consider making the access point on forty first place and egress only? This gives them the, the traffic flow that they're looking for to give their customers the ability to turn left onto Urbandale and it decreases the likelihood that walkers and bike riders will encounter turning traffic onto forty first place as they are traveling east on Urbandale. Walkers make that natural stop on the corner of forty first place before crossing the street, but cyclists do not. This significantly increases the danger they face by distracted drivers who will use forty first place as the path of least resistance. Fairway currently proposes the signage at, at the exit to deter those left turns onto forty first place. And they've, they've assured me they've had much success with it and I am very happy to hear this. It then stands to reason there could be do not enter signage in the same place. And that makes the access point on Urbandale Avenue the main entrance to give cyclists fewer conflict points, as was mentioned as a concern in the traffic portion of the PNC staff report. I support Fairway and what they are bringing to our neighborhood. And I also ask council to give serious consideration to this safety issue. Thank you.
Dan Johansson.
Good evening. I live on Forty Second Street and I'm within that two hundred and fifty foot radius. And I have a few comments. I'm not going to be as eloquent as Teresa, but I'll try and, a couple of things that I want to reinforce that she said. I think the egress only idea is a really good one and I'm a little disappointed to see Fairway didn't have that ready for tonight because my understanding was that was discussed and relatively positively received by them before. If that were an exit only, that would pretty much present, prevent traffic from the rest of the portion of forty first place, which would be a big improvement. And I think also importantly, you could make that exit angle toward Urbandale and keep people from pointing the cars directly at the houses across the, across the street on forty first place. So I think there's still a lot of room for improvement just in that little area. And then the, the other major thing I'd like to point out, that bike lane that we just saw on screen, it's, it's in the traffic lane. If a, if a distracted driver, which we all see every day on our cell phones driving, if that driver just pulls their car straight and as they go along Urbandale, they are fully in that bike lane right after they get across forty first place. So to angle that bike lane out into that traffic has always been dangerous. Up until now, you had a half a block to, to look, you know, keep your eye on these drivers as they come at you. And if you see them coming at you, you have some room. For whatever reason, no one ever would park in those parking spots in the turn lane, even though there's no signage saying you can't park there. But you, you would always have room to get away from these dangerous vehicles. So, so what we're doing now is moving the curb out so that you no longer have that cushion. And we're putting a whole bunch of turning traffic into the alley for Fairway. I, you know, I think we all want Fairway to succeed, so we want cars to be turning in there to, to give their business there. So in it, that in itself is, is, it is what it is. But I think we need to do more to protect the people biking in that bike lane. And to me, we're doing two things to make it more dangerous with what we just saw on screen. So the, between the, the egress only and that, those are some big changes that could be made to make this project less of a negative for the neighborhood. Thank you.
All right, are there any other parties in interest? If not, we're going to move on to the general public. Seeing none. Let's ask if there's any other comment from the general public. All right, as we said, this is a continued hearing and we're asking those.
Hi, I am just unmuted, so I was pulled on.
Okay, who's this?
Indira Schumaker.
Okay, go ahead. Jermaine comments up to one minute and hopefully it's all new information that hasn't been presented. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Sorry, I was muted. Um, no, I'm not a party in interest. I'm just a member of the general public. Um, but I just wanted to say that with the new information and with the inclusion of the neighbors in the area, I think that's been a good process, but I would like to see that with, um, there are continuing concerns with the neighbors in the area. So I would like to see forty six A be passed and forty six B be rejected. Um, do not pass the final consideration of the ordinance as there are still, uh, there's still more discussion to be had and more solutions to be brought forward for the issues that were presented by Teresa and Diane. So I would request that at least two people on the council vote now because it requires six votes. Um, I know that Carl Voss, you are concerned about the bike lane. Um, and I'm sure that there are other people on the council who are concerned about the residents. Concerns and since Fairway has been a good partner in discussing these things, I think it makes sense to continue this on to the next meeting. Thank you.
Lea Plath.
Hi, it's Leah. Leah.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, I would like to echo what Indira said and ask that two people vote no. I would, I was hoping I could get some clarification on why a meat market wants to go up in this neighborhood when there's been continuous asks from people who need actual, like a good grocery store in this neighborhood. Also, Josh, if you could answer to why, I know you love sustainability, why, why, you know, meats impact on the environment? And why we would even think about putting up something called a meat market in this neighborhood? Thank you.
Jalen Cavell.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. I just want to definitely uplift the comments of Leah and Dara as well as the two community members who are parties of interest. I think that this, um, this can still be fixed and made better. So I would definitely encourage, uh, you know, a little bit more work being done on this to try to fix all of the issues that community members were raising. Um, because I think it's important that council gets this right. I think a lot of these things that council talks about, like this issue right here, number forty six, um, we need more community input, like for example, the things that y'all are putting on the consent agenda are things that we need to be talking about, like the water trails project. We need to be talking about that stuff. Why is the public not allowed to talk about those issues? Because I for one don't support it, but I wasn't able to even voice my opinions on that. Um, so I think again, like community input is important on item forty six. I think y'all should listen to the community and go back to the drawing board and, and figure out what other solutions can be implemented here to make sure that this is really a, a good project and something that has the full approval and, and the backing and, and of course prioritizes safety in the community.
I'm.
KT.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
This is KT. I use they/them pronouns. I want to uplift Indira, Leah, Jalen, and the two others ask, I'm really asking you to have two people vote no. One of my biggest concerns is the bike lane issue. I don't know how many of you on this council would be okay with you pull this through, you vote it through, and then like a few months after it opens, bam, somebody gets ran over by a car because of that bike lane issue. I just want to throw that out there for you. I yield my time.
All right. I'll ask, are there any further comments from council?
If none, Mayor, I'd be happy to move item forty six. This has been a year-long process. I think hearing from Teresa speaks volumes for the amount of work that Fairway has put in on this. And even after the vote today, Fairway has been and always will be a good neighbor wherever they go. So if there's extra comments or ideas that Teresa or anybody wants to share, the nearby neighbors, Fairway has an open and willing ear. So I have no problem recommending that we move item forty six, forty six A. And because we didn't get the opposition from what we thought we were going to get in that neighborhood, I'd also like to make forty six B part of the motion.
Okay, motions been made. Would you poll the council, please?
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
All right, we look forward to Fairway's new presence up there. And as was pointed out, we do need to, to work on public safety around the bike lanes and ingress egress. So thank you for continuing to stay engaged. Let's move on to item forty seven, which is on the proposition to authorize an amendment to lease agreement with the USS Housman LLC for the rental of warehouse space at three oh one Southeast Eighth Street for temporary use by the Public Works Department. Council Communication number twenty one dash two three zero A is approving and authorizing execution of an amended lease agreement. Let's first open it up. Is anyone on council want to make a comment here? All right, let's ask the, the general public, would anyone like to make Jermaine comments? Up to one minute per person, five minutes maximum. Jalen?
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, speaking on item forty seven, warehouse space, renting that to the Public Works Department. I think that's interesting. Warehouse space is, is important. I think that space is something that is, is really important for folks. One where, one place where it is really important is when someone's having a seizure. But we know that Mike Fong, who y'all apparently approve of being the.
Okay, that's not.
Someone who was having a seizure.
Right, done. Right, Adam?
Hello, my name is Adam Callan. I use he/them pronouns. Um, yeah, I'm kind of curious what this warehouse space is going to be used for. Just because like why we're getting temporary warehouse space and it's probably something that we're going to need for a long amount of time, especially because we're tearing down warehouses in, in some areas. Um, just kind of feels weird that the city's going back and forth on using warehouses. Um, and I'd also really like to hear comments from, from anyone on council about the revelation that apparently Scott Sanders and Dana Winger have been hiding even more.
Right, that's. Thank you. Leah?
Hi, speaking on forty seven, Frank, is what Jalen and Adam not saying important to you?
Do you have anything Jermaine to this lease agreement?
It is Jermaine to the city. Do you have anything to say, Frank?
No, thank you. That's argumentative. Let's move on. KT?
Um, yeah, I would just like to point out that I am very interested in hearing everything that everybody before me had to say, like you cut off Jalen and what he had to say was important. You cut off the two.
Okay, that's not Jermaine to this issue.
Well, it really is.
We're very clear about that. Let's cut this off.
Your honor, I'll be happy to move forty seven and forty seven A.
All right, looks like we do have two more speakers. Dan Cobble?
Hi, um, I'm curious about everything else that has been going on with these public comments, but I'll move on. Um, I think it's very interesting that there are other unoccupied warehouse spaces in Des Moines. And instead of asking for, um, I mean, using some of these resources to help fight the homeless problem in Des Moines, which I mean, was a real problem last winter because several people died due to the cold.
This is warehouse space for the Public Works Department.
I think that.
Not housing that we're discussing.
I mean, I don't understand why it can't be converted, sir. I mean, I think that there is so a broader.
It doesn't relate to this lease. Next. Denver?
Hi, Denver Foot, she/her pronouns. Um, I just wanted to make a comment. Um, so I don't understand why somebody having a seizure would have to be hogtied by Michael Fong.
All right, that doesn't have anything to do with our Public Works Department trying to find space to occupy. All right. I think our five minutes are up. Let's, we've got a motion. Would you poll the council, please? Yes.
Yes. Did you ask?
She said yes.
She said yes.
Yes. My computer's unstable, I guess.
Voss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
That's seven yes, motion carries. That completes the, the hearings. It's five forty. That now takes us to our communications and, and reports section. Item forty eight, the, we've had a request to speak. And each speaker is, will receive up to two minutes. And after which time, the clerk will announce the time end and we'll move directly on to the next speaker. Let's start with Max Mowitz. Max?
Hello, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, I wanted to speak to item forty, as I do believe that this movement will only disproportionately impact those that are already put into. as well as other, as other members of our community cannot safely access that space for fear of police brutality, especially as we continue to see police violence in our community. We cannot continue to create spaces in Des Moines that are inaccessible to folks as they're already heavily surveilled and unsafe spaces in the city. This is not what I want taxpayer money used for, but rather the abolition of the Des Moines Police Department. In relation to the rezoning for Fairway, I echo the concerns of other folks that have spoken that city council members often are very concerned with commercial interests but take no interest in housing homeless folks, defunding the extremely violent Des Moines Police Department, or upholding folks' right to speak. Additionally, because I was slated to speak in the last city council meeting but wasn't able to because of the change in speaking time, I wanted to revisit this change and give my input. I am amazed by the folks that have come out this evening to speak at city council. These people have made me feel more empowered to engage with people in positions more than any other person on council. I am frustrated by the comments accompanying the change of speaking time as a way of fixing, messing up the flow. However, I would argue that the flow shouldn't be your greatest concern, but rather the voices of the people that you serve, because you do serve us. Additionally, it is unfathomable to me that the suggestion to create a time for public comment at another time came up last meeting. This is the time for public comment. Just a reminder that you all work for us, not in spite of us. And in fact, there's already an incredible People's Town Hall in Des Moines as a direct result of your failure as a council to hear the demands of the people of the city.
I'm.
Cora Eggerman?
Hi, my name is Cora Eggerman, and there are a number of things that I'm concerned about with the way that city council is run, and the utter lack of concern for the people you all are supposed to be representing. My dog agrees, clearly. Holding these meetings virtually has made them accessible to far more people than could otherwise attend. And with in-person meetings starting up again, there needs to be an ongoing virtual option as well. I know you've heard this before from plenty of sincerely concerned residents, but officers Michael Fong and Sean O'Neill need to be fired, not made de-escalation trainers. You cannot honestly believe that someone who hogtied and sat on a man who was having a seizure is an appropriate choice for leading de-escalation training, much less remain employed. With that said, I want to uplift the Back the Black Demands. Fire Scott Sanders. Fire Dana Winger. Fire all DMPD officers with violent records. Act on the Cannabis Task Force. Legalize and decriminalize. Finally, we need to defund and abolish the police. Thanks.
I want to make a quick comment as we move on to our next speaker. Our current de-escalation training session has come to a close, and we are announcing a partnership with the Police Executive Research Forum to do a training. And we are currently in negotiation with them for the next series of training. These are, it's an independent organization that focuses on critical issues of policing, and they were founded in nineteen seventy-six, and they have identified best practices on fundamental issues. And so we're very encouraged to bring our next training, which will be run by that particular group. But any rate, that isn't ready to put on the council agenda, but I think that the general public should know that that's where we're going for our next stage of training. Dan Cobble is our next speaker.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for that neoliberal announcement, Frankie. But I'm from Iowa City and grew up visiting Des Moines several weekends a year since I was a child. I always thought I would move there. Not anymore. The terrible things that the city government promotes and its reluctance to change have completely torn away that veneer of progressivism. Leave the public fridge alone. The way you have strangled public comment is a disgrace and a stain in the pages of municipal political history in this country. I want to support the Back the Black Demands. Fire Michael Fong, Sean O'Neill, and other city officials who are clearly racist and routinely violent to the public they serve. Fong isn't even qualified to be dog catcher, let alone a de-escalation trainer. Remove Perisic as DMPD spokesperson. He has been found to be a liar by the American court system, and even his family hates him. Remove Dana Wiener as DMPD chief. He's a racist who believes that minority residents thrive best under his boot. Prevent DMPD from enforcing archaic laws regarding marijuana prohibition. Tear DMPD apart brick by brick and replace it with a system that doesn't terrorize BIPOC residents and others pushing for change. Scott Sanders, you suck. Deborah Howell and Brendan McDonald are apologists for violent rapists, or racists, and embarrass all of Des Moines. Their public comments are routinely despicable. If council doesn't feel the need, make the changes needed to free your constituents from police violence, these smoldering injustices will ignite more than they already have. And people swearing at you in public comment will be the least of your problems. Lastly, council, I don't know any of you jokers personally, but there's one thing I can say definitively. Your horrible policy decisions are harming the Des Moines community, and y'all are some pretty awful people. Also, Joe Gatto, you don't even live in the ward you represent. Your restaurant is terrible, and you're a rat-faced punk. I don't know anything about the police executive research thing, but I won't be surprised if it's sketchy as hell. You aren't changing anything within your department if you don't fire these racists. Thank you.
If any of our speakers are on the phone, you have to hit star six to raise your hand. So if any of the speakers that the mayor's just called on, if you're here by phone, please hit star six.
Carrie Gosnell?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Carrie Gosnell, she/her/hers from DSM Surge. As a fellow white person, I feel responsible for naming the ways in which white supremacy shows up at these city council meetings. I've emailed you Tima Okun's Fifteen Characteristics of White Supremacy, and I hope you read it and reflect on it. White supremacy values a sense of urgency over taking time to think long-term and consider the consequences. Using officers with a history of excessive force complacency, de-escalation training demonstrates caring more about checking a box rather than actually accomplishing the goal. Additionally, you rush through these meetings seeming to care about finishing quickly rather than listening to the concerns of the public. These are acts of white supremacy. White supremacy is defensive of the organizational structure, creates processes to protect their power, and views critics as threatening, inappropriate, or rude. Your attempt to maintain power and order in these meetings with germane -ness and public speaking rules silences the community. This is white supremacy. White supremacy fears open conflict, and people in power try to ignore it or run from it. You have completely avoided holding Scott Sanders and Chief Winger accountable. Winger didn't attend the Marijuana Task Force meetings, can't enforce anything the task force recommended, and was the one who appointed Fong and O'Neill's trainers in the first place, yet you do nothing. This is white supremacy. White supremacy values paternalism. Those with power think that they are capable of making decisions for and in the interest of those without power, even though they don't understand their viewpoint or experience. Your refusal to institute a community review board demonstrates that you don't think about, that you don't think you need anyone's perspective in order to do what is right. That is white supremacy. White supremacy values the right to comfort and scapegoats those who cause discomfort. Shutting down a community fridge because a neighbor is uncomfortable is an act of white supremacy. White supremacy will never give us the change that we need. And if you do not actively re-educate yourself to turn away from it, then you are perpetuating it. Thank you.
Danny Austin?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Danny Austin. My pronouns are she/her, and I'm a member of CCI's racial justice team. Hundreds of Des Moines residents over months have told you that officers Fong and O'Neill must be removed from de-escalation training. And yet, the only action that you've taken, apparently, in addition to the ones that you haven't mentioned to us in all of our months of commenting, is to limit our speaking time. Even though tonight, you say tonight you're bringing in other trainers, I can't imagine why you didn't remove these men from this team, especially in light of last week's revelation that in twenty nineteen, less than two years ago, Sergeant Michael Fong hogtied a man experiencing a medical emergency. He and another officer then laid on top of the man, who was having a seizure, until he turned blue and a medic instructed the officer to get off of him so he could breathe. Even if this man had been drunk, as they speculated, this is violence. This isn't an officer who puts the safety of Des Moines residents first, or an officer ready to lead others in doing so. I'm glad to hear that you're finally, after months of comments, looking at removing these two violent officers. The external training team's funding, if it comes to pass, must come from the existing budget for ammo and military-grade gear, rather than giving the Des Moines Police Department additional taxpayer dollars. You are elected to be the voice of the communities you serve. Yet, when I hit two minutes, I will be immediately muted, and you won't respond to my concerns or answer my questions. You have been doing and will do the same to the other nineteen people who will be allowed to speak tonight, not to mention the many others that you have moved to later weeks and that you are not letting comment during the meetings. You will continue to sit in silence while people continue to ask you for solutions. We keep coming because our concerns are being ignored, aside from Mr. Mandelbaum, who wrote an editorial. We want statements on the record like this, and we want action above all. Ignoring the public isn't going to make us go away. Changing the rules isn't going to make us go away. We want to be heard, and we want action, and we want violent officers removed. Thank you for your time.
Pete Myers?
Good evening. Thank you. Do I get to have Pete's two minutes? I'm just kidding. Thank you for allowing more time to speak. I'm disturbed that a lot of other folks have been cut out of this conversation. My name is Laura Ferracci. I live at ten eleven Forty-second Street here in Des Moines. And I have watched the city council over the last two years grapple with a lot of racism and police violence, shootings downtown. And I look to Iowa City and Cedar Rapids, and I see what they're doing with, you know, implementing what has been asked of them, a citizen review board. A board like this would have been able to help you and the city manager navigate this de-escalation thing. All of you are white, and I'm also white. I don't have, I hope I don't have to tell you that without a voice of a person of color on your city council, you are at a disadvantage when it comes to dealing with violence and racism towards people of color. I think it's imperative that you, I really like you to fire those two officers. Maybe you read my letter to the editor of the Register. They have cost this city over a million dollars combined. And to give them the opportunity to have a position of power where they are training other officers to de-escalate circumstances and situations is, really does not put you guys in a good light. It did not look good. It still doesn't look good.
I'm.
Marco Bataglia?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, when you work with children like I did for thirty years, someone is being mean to someone else on a regular basis. I believe our continuing conversations about the officers selected to lead the de-escalation training of our DMPD are starting to sound like a middle school playground fight. The behavior of police officers, of peaceful citizens, of city government has spiraled down into meanness. Dirt is being kicked up, accusations that they started it, and a refusal to look at the issues with the eyes of the one with whom we disagree has led us to where we are today. However, when you look up the word "mean" in the dictionary, you will find one of the definitions is "an average between two extremes." Our city deserves and expects elected leaders who are mean, as in occupying a middle point between the extremes. Those at both extremes need to be heard by our elected leaders. A uniform, badge, and weapon should not wield more power than a single voice speaking two minutes or less at the end of a city council meeting. One of the most important weapons I wielded against meanness with my middle school students was my undivided attention. I would put down my pencil, turn my eyes to the students involved, and listen. And I expect nothing less from our mayor and city council members. Thank you.
He's not here, Your Honor.
Jacob Grobe?
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you. So Minneapolis police were just outed for a coordinated campaign between non-Miniapolis residents, city council members, the chief, and the mayor to promote MPD under the guise of concerned citizens. At the same time, Linda Westergaard had a cop propaganda piece published in the Des Moines Register using the same language and referencing a silent group of concerned citizens who support police. Oddly, we've never heard from these people. They haven't signed up in the hundreds to speak up at city council meetings, no marches of thousands of people through Des Moines streets. They haven't organized sustained acts of civil disobedience or endured brutality from militarized police using weapons banned in war, putting their life and livelihood on the line through illegal detainment and false charges. So many people, in fact, have been signing up for city council meetings and speaking up that you had to literally change the rules for the meeting. Over twenty million people in America, and even more around the world, came out to protest for black liberation last summer, the most of any movement in history. But according to you all, city council, we don't exist. And while you all were ignoring our demands to remove Michael Fong from de-escalation training, it is revealed that he has even more of a history of excessive force. What do you think it does for public trust when you hide evidence and ignore us? To say that you can't hear our voices or that they don't represent a majority means you don't care about black people. You don't care about poor people. You don't care about gay, non-binary people, immigrants, or anyone who isn't white and cisgendered. To ignore us is racist, plain and simple. And to sit in a seat of power and do nothing while people are being oppressed and murdered by the state is violence. You're not only complicit but aiding and abetting white supremacists, causing terror on people for existing. And while we're on this point-
I'm.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Stephanie Cardwell, pronoun she/her. I'm a resident of the Beaverdale neighborhood, and I have a few things I would like to say. First, limiting comment times of your constituents' voices limits their voices. You need to do more, listening to the community and not shutting them down. Second, you need to figure out a way to keep the community bridges going and get them accepted within code, because the extent of hunger in our community is devastating, and we need to feed people. Third, you need to help out with the rising danger of hate crimes that are posing against our BIPOC and AAPI neighbors. that are posed posing against our BIPOC and AAPI neighbors. I have a friend whose family was recently targeted, and it is devastating to them and their entire extended family, and they are very concerned for their safety. And finally, I echo the others who have previously said this, but Michael Fong needs to go, not only as de-escalation trainer, but from DMPD entirely. He has consistently shown himself to be a danger to the community. And this is one of the bad apples that we keep hearing about. Get rid of him now. Thank you.
Lori Young.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Lori Young with CCI's racial justice justice team. Tonight, I want to share my concerns about the Des Moines Police Department. Recently, the Des Moines Register reported that another excessive force lawsuit is being bought against the city and the police department because of the actions of Sergeant Michael Fong in a 2019 incident. This is the third excessive force charge for Sergeant Fong. The community has been calling for Sergeant Fong to be removed from teaching de-escalation training. So glad with the mayor's informal announcement tonight that you have come to your senses and realized that it would be in the best interest of building community trust to utilize a third-party trainer and curriculum. Obviously, if it works to have a Drake University professor teach implicit bias training, why wouldn't it work to have an expert, rather than a repeat offender, teach de-escalation? For so long, I have felt that maybe the reason this council has not exercised its authority to do what the community is asking is, number one, you don't care. Number two, you're scared to go against the poor judgment of city manager Sanders and Chief Wiener. And number three, you lack the courage to do the right thing. We're asking you to be proactive and ensure, on behalf of the safety of all Des Moines citizens, that officers like Michael Fong are held accountable. Are you going to wait until Mr. Fong seriously hurts another person? It's a shame that the capital city of Iowa is lagging behind other smaller cities in embracing real police reform. It's about public safety, council. It's about improving the community's trust in the police, and it's about being fiscally responsible. All these lawsuits are costing the taxpayers money. We need safeguards in place like a citizens review board to investigate and adjudicate complaints against the police, like Cedar Rapids has recently established. If you don't lead with courage, you will be replaced.
Mariella Thuma.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good morning, good evening. My name is Mariella Thuma, and I live in Des Moines. I would really like to uphold all the very eloquent eloquent speakers who have really been asking all of you to listen. You really need to be really to fire people like Michael Fong and Sean O'Neill. I mean, it's a disgrace. I was heartened to hear that you are actually going to get a third party to lead the de-escalation trainings. I mean, this has to happen, and it would also be nice to hear the details. As a city council, you're great at addressing inconveniences and annoyances in Des Moines. You also welcome business opportunities. Well done. However, you are sorely lacking in your attention to the civil rights of Des Moines residents, particularly those of a black and brown fellow residents. It seems to me if you ignore a problem, then it surely can't exist, right? Remember, at the end of the day, you've been you've been elected as our highest health. Your answer to us would be would would it would be really valued. I really would appreciate it if, when we bring up, people have been bringing up excellent points. Please, please do answer us, and let's have a conversation. And I love the idea of a citizen review board. Thanks so much. Bye.
Adrian Dumuth. Adrian. Deborah Howell.
Hello, can you hear me?
Is this Deborah?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, my voice is kind of croaky. I totally threw away what I was going to talk about tonight. I was hoping that everything was going to be positive. I'm sorry to hear that so many people think that everyone has not been given a voice because those of us who have been listening and been involved for the last six to nine months knows that everyone has had an opportunity to be heard when it is time to talk about our issues, not in the middle of the council meeting to extend it. And the recent times have had to change is because people do not know how to act accordingly during business. Using foul language and calling people names is not a way to get business done. I would like to thank the city council, because this is probably the last time you have to listen to me, and the state legislature for coming together and setting up rules for protesting and riots. At least we know how we can protest now. There are a lot of hot issues out there, and it is getting worse as it goes along. We have the defunding and doing away with the police department. We have the mask mandates, the all of the teachings going on in the schools that people are unhappy with. And.
Janice Hawkins.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful, thank you. I'm Janice Hawkins. I'm with CCI's racial justice team. Just want to ask my first question here. Is everybody listening? Do you have your pens ready? Because I have a few questions for you. And the first one is, why doesn't the city council agenda reflect work on a minimum of one or two of the issues that are raised during public comment? Are the issues not significant enough for you? I also wonder about where is the RFP for police collection of statistics? This action was supposed to have been taken months ago, and without that information, no one knows how prevalent racial profiling is. Just because we're not counting it doesn't mean that it doesn't happen. We need to know, so we need to know how to respond appropriately. And why have the ideas from the task force on marijuana not been acted on? All they're doing is collecting dust. Weren't those members bright enough for you? And then again, where's the effort for creating a citizens review board for Des Moines Police Department? Isn't accountability important? And I don't know if any of you noticed, but the last meeting, people people who were giving public comment were assigned letters. One person was assigned the letters KKK. Anyone notice that? Anyone speak up about that? And finally, what is the deal with continuing the employment of predatory officers? Hello, has no one followed the pattern of performance in Derek Chauvin's record? More importantly, how he left George Floyd in Minneapolis?
Time.
Brenda McDonald. Brenda McDonald. Okay, looks like Brenda dropped off. Could we have a motion to receive the reports and communications from our public?
I'll move 48 to receive and file.
All right, it's been moved. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition? Hearing none. Thank you for receiving and filing, and thank you for our general public for your comments this evening. We will now, I will listen for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, mayor.
All right, it's been moved. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition? Hearing none. This meeting's.